Performance measures and criteria for the 2050 MTP. These have been developed based on the goals and objectives that were adjusted. You know, I had edits on it based on the public comment period. We sent those out to everyone so you could see what those look like. And additionally, we received some other public comments during that period that directly pertain to performance measures and objectives or performance measures and criteria. So it's a whole mix of things that helped develop these measures and criteria. And we'll kind of all go through this later on. So this work session is an opportunity for committee members to ask questions and kind of get an overview of these items before they come before you in February. In February, staff is going to be asking for release of the performance measures and criterias for a 30-day public comment period in March. As a quick reminder for any of our public guests, this is not an opportunity for the members of the public to be asking questions or comments. That happens during the public comment period. If any members of the public have questions or comments, please feel free to email me and I can work with you after the meeting on answering those. We are recording this meeting, so it will be put onto the AMATS meeting site so people can watch the recording if you have to leave early or if people come in late. So just a heads up. And then lastly, we do just have a lot to go through. But please feel free to put your questions in the chat or raise your hand or just ask whenever. So with that said, oh yes, and a reminder, if you're not speaking, please keep yourself muted as much as possible. And with that said, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Juan and her team. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. And thanks for joining us, everyone. We have a lot to cover today in our two hours. Like Aaron said, it is a work session, so we want to be able to give you a more in-depth review of the performance measures, goals that are based on the goals and objectives and also project prioritization. So we're going to spend this first hour mostly on the performance measures, maybe an hour, hour to 15, since there are quite a few. And then we're going to switch to project prioritization criteria. They are related, and that's why we've combined them into one work session. I'm going to provide a little context and background. And then we've got Ben Coleman here from R&amp;M as well. He's going to go over and give you a tour of the performance measures and goals, objectives that they're based on, and then prioritization after that. We've also got Taryn Olson-Yell with us. She's going to run this Miro Board, which is a really cool tool that we've been using for virtual work sessions, open houses and public meetings. And it's basically a digital whiteboard. She's going to have some sticky notes up. And later on, if you have comments, concerns, questions, she can capture those on the whiteboard. So they become a public record or a record of this meeting. So just want to say that like the goals and objectives, the performance measures and targets, they're not in priority order. So they're just, when you see the tables later on, they're just for numbering for us to track each one. And also, this task in the overall MTP update is really foundational. It is informed by the goals and objectives for the MTP update. And later on, it will inform the next steps, which is everyone's favorite, which is recommended projects and how to make sure those are the ones that go into the plan. All right, so a quick note later as we get to the tables and how to read it. I think somebody who were given the materials beforehand, but the tables go left to right. We have the goals in there as well as the objectives. And then each performance measure and target, how they correspond to that goal or objective. And again, they're not in prioritized order. So we're not saying the first goal is more important than the sixth goal. There were about 600 comments received on the goals and objectives. So the team's been living, breathing, working on what we're going to go over with you today. So a lot of work has been going into this with the AMATS project staff, with R&amp;M staff. And we've hoped we got it to a point that makes it really easy to understand. Some of it can be very technical. And as we're going over each of the elements, just keep in mind, typically in transportation planning, we want to get the red out. But in this case, we have a lot of red in there, which is what we want you to focus on. Those are the local performance measures and targets. And those really came out of the public comment for the goals and objectives. The last MTP, the 2040 MTP, really focused actually solely on the federal goals. Those are in there as well, but we wanted to be responsive. And so there's a lot of red, and that's what we want to focus on today. All right, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben and Taryn to run the Miro Board. And then we'll, if you have comments, questions or concerns, like Aaron said, please put your hand up or get on camera and we'll make sure we pause for a moment and take your comments. All right. Thanks, Ben.
All right, let's jump right in. Taryn, if you can shift us over to the first table. All right, and just to piggyback a little bit on what Juan said. So the black text, those are the federal measures. Those we don't anticipate changing based on, you know, code of federal regulations and United States code. Those like references contained there, that kind of dictates the black text. So we'll shift and focus on the red text. That's our local pieces. And the questions that we were really asking were, what are the gaps? So based on, I guess, what we heard from the community and then what we're trying to accomplish with the goals and objectives, the question was, what aren't these federal measures adequately addressing? So I'm going to keep it really high level, but feel free to ask questions and we can get as specific as you want after on. So the first one, the goals in terms of maintaining existing infrastructure, we thought that the federal goals do a really good job at covering your regular wear and tear and accounting for kind of your standard, what we think of as useful life. So what we asked was, well, what other things can rapidly accelerate that timeline? And so which led to Objective 1B, which is increasing the infrastructure's resiliency to hazards. And so what those local measures are trying to do is looking at other things like seismic activity, floods, something that would drastically reduce that timeline. Moving on to Goal 2. Improving safety and security. Now again, here, the federal goals between FHWA and FTA, they did a decent job at providing a broad understanding of safety, how we understand safety, how we measure that. But it did lack some nuance. And if you scroll down a little bit more to the local measures. So one of the things that we focused on, that we thought there wasn't quite enough nuance, was rather than general collisions, looking at intermodal collisions. So vehicle to pedestrian, vehicle to bicyclist. And the common denominator is the vehicle collision there. We didn't look at pedestrian pedestrian collisions because that wouldn't make any sense.
So. Hey, Ben.
Yes.
Brad has his hand up.
Oh, absolutely. Jump on in.
Yeah, quick question, Ben. As we're going through these, I noticed that you have targets listed for future dates. One question I have is, do we have actual data from past years? And is that, it's a lot, you know, thinking about targets, it's helpful to know kind of where we're at. And have you looked at, as you're going through these items, have you looked at where we're going to get the data? What data we have? Have you already started to explore that?
So that's a great question. And there's, and that's one of the big reasons why for a lot of the local, for most of the local objectives, we don't have specific targets. Because this is a huge shift from the 2040 MTP, which only had the federal measures. And a lot of other MPOs do the same thing. They just have the federal measures. And then you have a few MPOs that do look at, they will look at, they'll have their own regional measures with long-term targets. Because of that, we, AMATS, I guess, doesn't really know kind of, one, like what all is trackable, where all the data is. And so our recommendation is to include, you know, most of these performance measures and then take, whether it's between now and then the next update to understand, to get a better sense of what's trackable, what's not, what can be modified to become trackable. And then some other pieces like, is the juice worth the squeeze? Like, what's the level of effort to get the data? And does it meaningfully accomplish its corresponding objective? So we don't as of this, but the idea is to have something like that for the next update.
How about for all the federal ones? Do we have actuals that have been documented previously? Maybe the prior MTP? Or would this table make sense to add at least a column of some actuals? Or am I alone in thinking, at least what actuals we do have would be good to see?
So for the federals specifically, it depends. So with FHWA, AMATS, the position AMATS has taken is to go with what the state has for FHWA and then for FTA, relying on efforts with PeopleMover to dictate those targets. And so, and so you'll see, so for example, like the 1A, 1 through 7, like the top performance measures, those targets haven't been set yet moving forward. And then same thing for, let's see, for PeopleMover, where you see the 23 through 27 targets, those have been set. So those were just a very clean drag and drop into the table. With Alaska Railroad, I contacted some of their folks and asked for their asset management plan. And what they're doing is, I think they're finalizing their 22 targets, but there was nothing for 23 through 27. So those are just some of the limitations that we're working with. Did I get it, your question or?
Yeah, the one last question I think is, do others think it would be good to show on this table what actuals we do have? Yeah.
So we talked about that as the project team, and it was decided that having past targets in here would be very confusing for individuals looking at this and wanting to know why we're reporting on past targets instead of reporting on what we're working towards. So we made the decision to not include previous information. That can be found pretty easily outside of this table.
And I guess I don't mean targets, I mean actuals, not targets, but what the data is showing we're at, where we're at.
Well, that would be, we would have that information when we actually developed the targets themselves.
So Brad, I just want to make sure I'm understanding clearly. So are you talking specifically for the federal targets that have been tracked between previous MPOs? Or actuals for some of the local measures that maybe we haven't tracked yet?
Well, we have tracked for the federal ones. I mean, I recognize that. I'm not asking you to do a lot of work to go figure out the actuals of all of the locals because we still want to figure out if these are locals we even want to track. But I think, given that you're showing future targets in these target columns, targets without understanding existing actuals, in my mind, it's not as useful and it's helpful and it raises more questions.
Just to clarify, targets on the federal side are already set through a separate process. So we are just taking those targets that are accepted and incorporating them into here. We're not setting new targets for those federal process ones.
But point is taken. I guess having a way for someone who may just see this table specifically, who may not have that context to be able to understand, well, you know, yeah, what is the basis for some of these targets? And how different are they from what we're actually seeing? That absolutely makes sense. Okay, I'll just keep chugging along then. Taryn, if you, yeah, jump right into there. Okay, so for, okay, so for Goal 3, we had a couple of big, some big themes here. One was.
Hey, Ben. Sorry, I have a question from Mr. Wettel.
Jump on in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, can we go back to 1B? Sorry.
Definitely.
Be faster than me. So in this increased transportation infrastructure, resiliency to natural hazards. So I guess you're talking about are the roads safe? You know, and I think a resiliency to natural hazards is kind of where my experience is, is like wildfire on the hillside. You're, we're trying to get more, you know, evacuation routes up there. And some of the, you know, we have a limit on to roughly no more than 30 homes without, you know, second egress. So it's second egresses. And, you know, I don't, if, maybe that's far off here, but it's a natural thing. That's what I go to here. And none of these three measurements go to that.
Yeah, so that's a good note. And one of the challenges as we were building these is sometimes you have a performance measure that meets multiple objectives or, you know, multiple objectives that can be summed up in a single, in a single performance measure. So in this, in this case, we do have something further down in safety. Actually, if you scroll down, we talk about improving emergency response. And that could be. And so we have two good options. So whether it's in 1B where we talk about natural hazards such as fire response or, Taryn, if you scroll down a little bit to 2, I want to say 2B maybe. Yeah, so improving the ability to achieve timely emergency response, maybe that's a little bit different. There's a different implication. But absolutely, we can make a note and look at that. And another, I guess, another consideration is we also look at connectivity of the network. And so while that accomplishes sort of multiple objectives and multiple goals, that is a key implication as well, the emergency, sorry, evacuation, et cetera.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so for three, some of the big themes we had were, so incentivizing creative strategies to improve the system, that was a big one. Huge one was giving people alternatives to driving and making those alternatives good. A lot of comments were about winter maintenance, for example. And this is, this is another one of the challenges where it's, we want to be responsive and recognize this legitimate need, but also trying to figure out, well, what is the, what's the best location? Where do we slot this where it'll be most effective? Given AMATS, AMATS's limitations and what they can directly address. So AMATS doesn't handle maintenance, but what can they do? How can they still be an active partner in this? Another big theme was, oh, the transportation and land use connection. So if you go, if you go down to 3C1, we talk about context-sensitive solutions. And this is, and this is kind of a catch-all. So this is another sort of challenge. What happens when we have one program that accomplishes sort of multiple things? And so with context-sensitive solutions, that's where we address the land use connection. That's where we look at environmental factors. That's where we look at equity factors. And so a lot of that is wrapped into, a lot of that is wrapped into the context-sensitive solutions process. And so, and so knowing that, the question then becomes, well, is that process adequately accomplishing, you know, the intent, these objectives? And if it's not, what is the best way to address that? So these are some of the questions we ask. But what CSS is intending to do and what we're trying to do with these types of performance measures that look at the land use connection, we're trying to accomplish the intent of the objectives while also making sure that we allow the context to inform how that intent is met. We can go down to Goal 4. Do we have another question?
Yeah, a quick question on that. 24 to land use plan identifies transit corridors throughout the city. I look at the transit measures. I mean, we can't, in my view, provide high-quality transit throughout the entire city, nor would I find a metric that looks at just a blanket transit as being as helpful as something maybe more focused on transit corridors. And if those, along the transit corridors are really focused on transit or how that accommodation or the frequency as well, that's something that, as I read through this, stood out to me. But I'm kind of curious what thoughts might be there.
Yeah, so that was, that was another piece. So whenever there's, we get a really good, really good comment, like, exactly. Like, so PeopleMover, for example, a number of years ago, when they were redoing their system, the question was, well, do we prioritize coverage or do we prioritize service? Because it's a natural trade-off when you have limited funding. And so they prioritized service. And so that's where you had your rapid, the routes that had, the quick headways, that kind of thing. And so we addressed that more specifically in the prioritization criteria, where there's a specific piece that, where you get points if it's, you know, a transit project that's addressing one of those specific, I'm trying to remember the specific term, but those development-specific areas where they're focusing on something like transit-oriented development. And so that's where we chose to address it. But of course, we're, you know, open to ideas as well. John?
Somewhat following on that comment, you know, it's like, you know, you have the 3B, 4, number of bus stops improved or added. So we took out a lot of bus stops when we went to the kind of service model instead of coverage. And if you support that service model, then that was a success. For taking out bus stops was a sign, yay, we did something. But it's a little odd, but.
John, I apologize, I'm having a little trouble hearing.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
It's still a little quiet.
I don't know what to do. I'm right on, I have a headset on, so it should be as good as ever. Can you hear me?
I'll pay close attention.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I'm just, you know, this measurement, bus stops improved or added. When we moved to the service model, we took some out. But presumably, going to the service model was an accomplishment. So that would kind of show something opposite. But it would, you know, I like to link these things to other plans. And we have, you know, plans like, you know, the land use plan, you know, how we move forward in achieving the goals of those plans. And some, like the land use plan, the planning department has done a good job tracking progress on all the variety of goals there. So you could really just pull from there, I would think, you know, annually.
Absolutely. And if you look at 3C2, you'll see percentage of programmed transportation facilities that comply with or implement the land use plan. So there were, there were some key plans that were kind of at the top of our mind. Land use plan was one of them. Climate action plan was another one. Transit on the Move, because you're absolutely right on like, and that's where the context was so important. You mentioned getting rid of bus stops. And so having a performance measure like, well, number of bus stops may not be the best way to approach a situation because in certain cases, more doesn't necessarily mean better. And so we kind of wanted to, I guess, to account for the fact that there, you know, the context can necessitate different responses.
Right, I almost think 3C2 moved to 3B as well, but only focus on, you know, transit facilities.
Okay, yeah, yeah, let's, let's make a note of that.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
And Bart has his hand up. He might have something to add, Bart?
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed more clarification, but specifically the number of bus stops added or improved. John makes a good point. We did remove a bunch when we did the system redesign. But I think this particular target is focusing on ADA accessibility. And maybe we need to spell that out more. We have a large number of bus stops that are still just like in ditches or on the side of the road. And if we really want to encourage transit use, I think this particular measure is talking about making those bus stops accessible, inviting, safe, those kind of standards, in my opinion.
Absolutely. And I think a lot of that is addressed later on in the project prioritization. With, yeah, without getting too much into detail right now, it looks at, well, what happens when you have road projects or non-motorized projects? I mean, a lot of times like that's, you can't have great transit without that supportive infrastructure. And so we try to capture that later in there as well. Okay, so that's everything I had for Goal. Oh, John, did you have another, another thought?
No, I don't know how to drop my hand, though.
Oh, it's okay. I think it's somewhere near the top. But anyways, so let's go on down to Goal 4 unless anyone has any other thoughts, concerns, questions. All right, Goal 4, support the economy. So when we're, yeah, when we're sliding the federal measures, this one seemed to be probably the closest fit. But there were some other, some other needs and gaps. And one of them was tourism and general investment. And the idea here is creating a sense of momentum that becomes a virtuous cycle for future, for future investment. A lot of, you'll see a lot of references to other sections because part of, aside from what we specifically called out in terms of accessibility, aesthetics, wayfinding, which is really good for new people or visitors or people that are, you know, going, let's say downtown, for example, or to, you know, some targeted location. A lot of this is accomplished by having good alternative transportation infrastructure, having user-friendly transit and biking and walking infrastructure as well. So that's why I see a lot of cross-references here for Goal 5. Here, again, you see a lot of references to CSS, the contact-sensitive solutions, as well as Trail Review and NEPA. We use these because it was accounting for the fact that there are existing sort of programs or methods of addressing kind of a very broad range of environmental concerns. And so, so some of the comments that we received were, well, you know, make sure you're looking at wetlands and critical habitat, anadromous streams, things like that. But for us to list that here, I think, wouldn't, probably wouldn't do it justice. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a comprehensive approach. And so just making sure that, that we're communicating that new projects, eligible projects essentially, they do go through these processes that account for that very, very broad range, or I should say extensive range of environmental concerns. There is also a big lack with mobility options as well, especially as it comes to healthy lifestyles. And so you'll see down in 5E, different performance measures that are, I mean, essentially like if you're, you know, if you're building the active infrastructure that allows for active transportation. And then, of course, equity, which we'll jump down to in a little bit. Having free options, free and, and while still quality options of getting from A to B, it has a broad range of benefits. Okay, so Goal 6, advance equity.
Ben, we have a comment in the chat.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. For measure 4B1, can you take me to 4B1 really quickly? Yeah, okay, so another good question. This was, this was a bit of a challenge. So we could probably, if we can't find that directly, we can probably find some sort of proxy to get at that. In our opinion, the bigger challenge was what happens when you have, when there are other societal factors at play? So for example, you could build 1,000 miles of bike networks and have, you know, flawless, you know, transportation system. And then you have something like COVID, which could still tank tourism. And so, and so that's one of the things that we've kind of been wrestling with. What happens when you're doing the right things, but there are other pieces at play? Is it still worth it to track? And if so, what, how can we frame that discussion in a way where where it doesn't look like, you know, we're failing to do the right thing? Essentially, it's, in this case, I think the approach is control what you can control and do the, and so, so that it's promoting local investment of tourism, but recognizing the limitations. Let's see.
And quick, I have a comment on that. I really like the idea of measuring outcomes and not just output. Where output is, you're making these improvements and then the outcome is, what's the, what's the impact really, what's it doing? So I see that this is looking to try to measure an outcome. And the question then is, I'm really curious on, and any time that we're doing outcomes, are their partners, do they have data? Are they feeling like it's good? You know, are we involving them? Have we talked with the tourism ministry? Or is that going to be part of the next process of the public outreach to see if this really is meaningful to them?
Yeah, so we do have, there were some sort of key areas, and this is one of them where it would make a lot of sense, especially during, during the public comment period. You have to have a chat with the tourism board, see what do you get, like, what do you already collect? Uh, and this is something that we've already started doing, uh, for example, with, uh, with, with people mover, uh, collaborating there and saying, hey, what, what kind of data are you guys already collecting? Um, and, and they've actually been, been pretty instrumental in shaping those transit, um, or at least informing those transit specific, uh, uh, performance measures. And so, and so the idea is to do that with these other, these tricky areas, um, where, where it would be challenging for, uh, for just purely planning staff to, to come up with, with that data, with those data. So short answers, uh, sometime during public comment.
Ben, I think John Middleton had a comment in the chat. He says five B points to the items in five C.
Yes. So it, and so this is, uh, another one of those kind of challenging areas. So, um, actually, wait, hold on. I misread that. Uh, let's see. A B points to five C. John, could you, could you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, I almost think that, you know, what we do, our response to climate change is to drive less and walk more. And it's kind of what your five C does.
Yeah. So there's, there's a.
Instead of speaking to how much might be flooded, which I suppose is an element as well, but.
Yeah. So, so this is, um, there, there are three kind of pieces that, that at least were in the back of my mind, uh, putting these together. So there's one B, which is the infrastructure resiliency. So you have things like climate change and natural, uh, and natural hazards. One B focused on the infrastructure side. Five B focuses on, uh, the community side. And this is kind of where actually it would, it would be really good to get, uh, input here, uh, something that we want to meaningfully address, but, um, but it's kind of challenging. So five B is meant to be kind of the human side. How do we, um, how do you promote resiliency? But you're absolutely right. A lot of that's done, uh, at least as far as AMATS is concerned, uh, it's, it's through projects. So there may be an opportunity here, especially because there wasn't a specific, uh, five B measure. There may be some, some space to combine there. Cause you're absolutely right. That's, that, that is how we address, uh, much of the concern of five B. Okay. So for goal six, advanced equity. A lot of this is tied to a couple, uh, big things. So a lot of this is tied to one, measuring the disparities. And so it's rather than just saying, well, how long does it take to get to work? How long, uh, you know, what are, uh, what are the bus route frequencies? What are the sort of these things that we all want to see sort of at a broad community level? We thought it would be important and a lot of the public comment was saying, well, how are we addressing this for our most vulnerable populations? And so this is kind of what it does. This gives us, uh, this allows AMATS to at least start measuring until we can start setting targets. Uh, how, how does it change for, for these areas that may be low income or, or limited English proficiency? Areas with, with a higher concentration of older residents, um, that sort of thing. And so the reason, uh, I want to focus quickly where we talk, it says EJ, so environmental justice area of 60th or greater percentile. The reason we use that, uh, is the tip uses the same thing. So we wanted to create the shortest logical jump. So if it's already being considered and measured here, uh, that's just a time savings for when, uh, for, for tip scoring later on. So that's everything that I have. If there are any questions, uh, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise we can jump into, um, the prioritization criteria.
I have another question.
Sure, sure.
The, some of the measures that look like they're kind of snapshots in time. Is there like, is it like end of the year that they would be measured on a year to year basis? What's kind of the thought about the point in time that something might be measured?
Yeah. So, um, that, yeah, that, that's a good point, right? To have, um, to maintain the integrity, uh, the integrity of the data that, that we're, we're measuring. So a lot of that's going to be, uh, the way the team saw it was that's going to all be fleshed out as these are, um, between now and then the first, uh, between now and the next update. So, uh, so the questions we're asking is one, like, is this measurable or was this, you know, just, you know, a huge pain to, or a huge, you know, staff and budget burden, and it didn't really give us what, what we needed or, or it wasn't that insightful. And then the other piece will say, uh, outlining the methodology for, um, best practices, how it'll be measured, especially for this point in time. Measures. So to be determined, but. But absolutely looking for data consistency. All right. So if there's nothing else, let's jump on into project prioritization criteria. All right. So this one's, uh, it's, it's a little weird to read if you're not used to it. What we did is we took the, the general format for the tip scoring criteria and, and tried to make it sort of similar, at least in format. So again, it's, it's reducing the logical jump between one to the other. And so if you're, oh, go ahead.
Can I step in really quickly?
Absolutely.
A reminder for our guests who are members of the public, this is not in a, a session for members of the public to ask questions or provide comments. You will be getting an opportunity later, uh, during the public comment period. This is an opportunity for the committee members to ask questions before this comes before them in February. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, okay. So yeah, so for, for this one, uh, it's again, so kind of modeled after the tip. And so, uh, if you look at step, yeah, just an easy step one through four. The first one is when you look at the table, there's going to be three sort of major sets of columns. And so you'll have, uh, further on the right, these are going to be transit only projects or bike and ped only projects. While the first one, the furthest, uh, left scoring type column, uh, that's going to be for your, your sort of complete streets, your, your regular, what you think of as a, a road or corridor project. And that one specifically can, and, and what we're showing later should in, in some ways incorporate, uh, the non-motorized and transit aspects as well. So we've not prioritized any goal over the other. So they're equally weighted. And so each one is worth each goal or each section is going to be worth 20 points. And then each column as well is going to be worth, uh, 20 points. And so what that allows is, uh, an apples to apples comparison between particular types of projects. And then, uh, and then comparison, uh, when you're scoring all of them broadly, looking at them, uh, between categories. So let's jump on in. So you're only going to use one column at a time. Or sorry, one column for, for a project. Let's see.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah. So, uh, in the prior TP, there were non-motorized project lists and a road project list. So just looking at this, they have a clear, oh, and there's, and there was a public transportation projects list. So it's kind of keeping that same, in this case, the complete streets, major infrastructure, which includes kind of the whole package. The bicycle pedestrian, which is not non-motorized in transit. And, and even though each of them, they have the same total for the projects. Are they going to be listed as separate lists and not integrated and compared and the number, the total points that they earn? Are they going to be prioritized in a similar list? Or what's the thoughts?
Yeah. So, so yes and no. And, and really it was, it's, it's funding, uh, funding limitations that, that are the reason that we have it split out three ways. And so, um, there may be some FTA funds that'll be for, you know, let's say for, for a rolling stock replacement project. That wouldn't be applicable to a bike and ped project or, or a general road project. But you may have, for example, uh, a complete, like a road project and that funding may be more flexible. And so you, you might be able to build bus stops and non-motorized infrastructure as part of that project. And so, uh, and so it's, it's just being able to separate it out, um, based on, uh, based on, uh, funding.
The prior TP did have rail projects as a separate category as well. Thoughts on, is that something to keep separate? And then the one other question to ask, uh, is with these total points and the prioritization, who has the final decision making? You know, are, is the, with scoring, you always run into the, the question of any metric system is not going to be perfect. And so, uh, maybe as you're showing some of the scoring and having the steps for scoring, having some comment in there about this is up, this is information that will be used by the, uh, policy committee and making their final determination. But really there needs to be that, that element of decision making.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's actually a great point. Um, cause ultimately, uh, it, it's, the tip is where you take these projects, you know, these recommended projects and actually determine, well, what's going to get funding in the short term? But broad, broad scale, what, what we were trying to accomplish with, with these specifically is, um, rather than, uh, sort of creating this, uh, I guess sort of a, a perfect ranking, um, it's supposed to not weed out the wrong term. It's meant to incentivize the types of projects that will further goals and objectives. And so, uh, and so if you have a road project in mind, um, and, and this may be easier if we, if we go down to the first, uh, the first piece of the table, just to give an example. So for something like, um, like goal one, maintaining existing infrastructure. Having someone who's going to recommend a project and be able to review these goals, uh, whether it's maintain, you know, infrastructure, creating, you know, op, uh, mobility options, improving those options, incorporating equity or, uh, looking at projects that'll reduce greenhouse gas emissions specifically. We want all of those things to sort of be considered well ahead of, of that recommendation. So, uh, and so what we have here in the scoring, um, you'll see bonuses and you'll see penalties. And so that, uh, it's meant to get people's attention to, um, to show what essentially you penalize what's going to, what's going to bring, uh, the AMAT system further away from goals and objectives. And then you want to incentivize through bonuses or high scoring, those things that will, uh, bring it closer. And I, and I, I went up, uh, on a bit of a tangent, so I may have missed your original point. Um.
I guess the, the original point was making it clear, if someone takes a look at this and realizes that everything is getting points and scoring. I mean, that is really helpful and doing project scoring provides really helpful information to the decision makers, but does not replace the decision makers. So providing a little bit of that context in the intro to the table maybe would be helpful so that it's clear where that decision making is happening.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll make a note and that'll be part of, um, at least when it, when it goes out for public comment, trying to have, yeah, a good discussion of, of, you know, how does this actually look when it comes to scoring projects? That's good.
Yep. And I've grabbed that note. Thanks, Brad. That's a great suggestion.
All right. Uh, so that's, that's everything that I have specifically. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to run through, um, through anything with these. But, um, the big, I mean, again, the high level notes are, uh, if you look at this, for example, you'll see there are different max points within the different, within the different, um, columns, but, and, and then some that may be, uh, maybe more or less applicable, uh, not applicable at all. Uh, so we needed to adjust the points, uh, to make sure that we're maintaining 20 in there. But something to think about maybe for the, for the February meeting is, uh, do you want all of these goals to be prioritized equally? Do you not? And then when you're looking at sort of the individual weightings, uh, do you have? Are the individual cri, uh, criteria, are they, is, are they addressing the relative importance, uh, according to meeting that goal or not? And so there may be some adjustments there, um, with individual point values. Uh, go ahead, Brad.
I think getting into that, that waiting discussion, I mean, that's, in my opinion, it kind of worms because there are going to be so many different stakeholders, so many different people. And I think making it clear that this is just information for decision makers, then we can on our own be able to see, oh, this criteria has these scores and, and be able to make some judgment calls. But trying to, trying to do waiting can, can have lots of problems. And I don't think we'd ever really get something that was fully adequate.
Sure. And, and yet, no, that, that, that is a good point as well. So, um, this is, uh, intended to be, uh, a rough order of magnitude estimate. Taren, can you run down to the furthest one? Goal six, equity. Um, there's, I think we have a good example in there. And again, it's, it's sort of carrot and stick. So, uh, and you'll look at the, the penalties are pretty significant. If you look, let's first column near the bottom where you have minus 10 or minus 20. So it's, uh, project is located within an environmental justice area of 60th or greater percentile, and it will negatively impact, uh, mobility for vulnerable populations. And so, um, and so again, rough order of magnitude, it's, it's saying, look, the public doesn't want this and best practices dictate this is, you know, a really bad thing. And so we want to make sure, um, projects that are going to do that, uh, you know, aren't going to perform well. And so if someone has a project in mind, they want to make, uh, they want to do a really good job at making sure that they're looking at, um, that they're paying attention to this particular piece.
I have another question. Um, are these all or nothing scores, like, you know, plus 20, plus 10, minus 10, minus 20? Is there minus 15, minus five, if there fall a little bit in the gray area or what's, what's the vision?
So this, this is one of those where there's, um, there, there is some space. So, so the ones where, uh, where there is a clear, um, good, better, best, we generally have select one. If, actually, if you stay right here for now, um, if you go to the bottom right corner, you have something that's select all that apply. And so there may be something that's more kind of a, like an à la carte style where it's, um, not necessarily good, better, best. But saying, look, if you can find a way to incorporate multiple, um, priorities into your project, you'll get additional points there. And so that would be that, uh, select all that apply. Um, in terms of, uh, gray area, we absolutely can add more, uh, more nuance. And so if you, as you're reviewing before the February meeting, um, if you see some specific spots, you're like, hey, we, we think there's a really good middle ground, uh, send that our way. It's, um, you know, we'd be happy to incorporate that.
So, so basically we don't want to have numbers that you get that are not listed in this table, like a plus one, if there's only a plus two option. But what we'd rather do is add those, cause otherwise it does become more challenging for those who are doing the scoring, right?
Yeah. And, and so this, and so I think we started with, uh, I want to say like 30 some odd criteria, and we're able to narrow it down to, to 20. And so that, that's, that's the challenge. It's, you don't want it to become, you know, super onerous for, you know, if you have, you know, a hundred plus projects that you're scoring and have to run through 20 criteria. But at this, at the same time, uh, not sacrificing those really important pieces that, that people care about.
Yeah. And I will add to that too. A lot of our discussion was about the scope of the projects that are going to come to us at this MTP level. How much detail is actually going to be known at the time to really break out those gray areas into a meaningful, scoreable criteria? And so that was a reason like Ben said, you know, we started with like over 30 criteria and we ended up, uh, condensing and trying to consolidate a lot of that in order to have meaningful scores that were going to be practically applicable at this MTP level. So, um, but yeah, open, definitely open to suggestions. We'd love to hear your thoughts on that. And if we can improve this, you know, that's why we're talking to you. So. Yeah, Craig, go ahead.
Um, I was just going to say, having done a bunch of, uh, scoring over the years with the tip and the MTP. The way we've always done this, which works out fairly well is, for example, if you see that you get a plus four on something. I can't go in and put a three because I think it doesn't quite do something. The four is the four. So once these numbers are set and the policy committee, uh, approves these criteria for this and the tip, et cetera, they're in. And you, we just can't, it just really throws off scoring and it just puts a lot of ambiguity into it. So it's just best, once they're locked in, the four is the four, it can't be a three, the negative 10 is negative 10. Once it's locked in, it's locked in.
Sure. Go ahead, John.
Yeah. Can you hear me? Okay.
Uh, still a little quiet, but, uh, but that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. I don't know what to do about that. Um, I will try to bellow, but, uh, there's other people around. So, um, you know, as one of the people who would be in a position to ultimately look at this, I, I think there is a expectation in the public, once they see this, that it would be stuck to fairly closely. But I appreciate Brad's point that you may get, or we would end up with possibly some projects that just make no sense going through this as well. So I guess I'd challenge Brad to, to show some examples of that and try to get the. So I guess I'd challenge Brad to to show some examples of that and try to get this, you know, as close to possible. And then also maybe somehow reflect clearly for the public, so they can look at this and, you know, maybe plus three points for traffic engineers judgment or something. But but just be open about what will really happen. It just otherwise you get bit at the end. People don't understand.
Yeah, and so this is, I mean, a big one is like there is, it is weeding out the, you know, the the types of projects that are always going to be unrealistic. Well, we want to hyperloop on every street or or we want a massive, you know, highway through, you know, through through this wetland. I mean, like, it's it's there is, it is like a weeding out some of the the projects that will never make sense. But then for the ones that are potentially more marginal, finding a way to tip the balance and and getting people to think, well, how can we incorporate ADA accessibility? How can we incorporate transit access, things that'll just make it a better project?
At some point, we get into, you get all your projects, but then we have to be fiscally constrained with the final result. And that'll sum out, so maybe recognition of that, just, you know, you get a lot of public aren't as involved. And it's hard, then you get a thousand page document, but try to make that clear, too. Maybe that's the ultimate weeding out.
Absolutely.
And to John's point, I think the the only one, as I look through it, that seems a little bit all or nothing is, I think, the very first one, where it's got zero and plus 10 or plus 12. I think for the most part, a lot of these do have an intermediate option. And I think just that first line, as I looked at it, the question did come to my mind of, is there any middle grounds on those bike pad and transit, maybe having a middle score? Just so that it's a little bit easier if something is helpful but not as helpful.
Sure, sure. Yeah, well, we can make a quick note there. And and there, I guess, another another point to make is that some of these. So for example, like, there may be like a transit project, for example, that the intent isn't to improve the condition of the rolling stock, for example. It could be, you know, it could be achieving a different intent. And so and so something, and so a rolling stock project's going to score well with with that particular in that particular section. But one that's addressing safety is going to, you know, perform really well under the safety piece. And so that's kind of the balancing act we're trying to, we're trying to do. And that's another reason why we had the same scoring between goals to prevent those types of challenges later on. All right, does anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I'll
I have a number of other questions, but I don't want to monopolize this if others have other things that they want to ask. But if not, I could just dive into a few.
Yeah, jump in, keep them coming.
So one is the tip criteria. These are quite similar, and you referred to that they follow a very similar structure. One question I have about that is will a lot of the scoring that is done on these then lead into assisting those? And this might be a question for staff. Make it easier to do this, to go through the tip process? Will it save our staff time going through the tip process of their scoring by having this be so similar? And are there other similarities that maybe we could make and do, given that that recently was approved?
Yeah, Aaron, if you have specific thoughts, jump on in, otherwise I can try to tackle it.
Yeah, so from my viewpoint, yes, it will help depending upon when the tip projects are looked at, because, you know, there's a gap between when we do the MTP and the tip. So there may be time that's passed between the scoring of this and the next tip. So we just have to refresh the data. A lot of this is just trying to harmonize the criteria as best as possible, so it's easier for people to see the relation between the MTP and the tip. And I think these do this. And if a side benefit is make it easier for staff, that's an awesome thing, and I think it does that in most part. My biggest concern is just making sure that we're not overburdening people who are going to be scoring these projects. Because, you know, the MTP typically gets 200 plus projects that we have to score. And so, you know, I would strongly recommend we don't add any more if possible and keep it to at least 20 or less.
But Brad, if actually, if I can just piggyback off of that, though, actually, this first criterion, we have a really good example here. So in the tip criteria, it'll say the project brings pavement condition from poor to good, or and that'll get the highest score. And the next one down will be from poor to fair. And, you know, it'll be a slightly lower score. Now, at the preliminary planning level, it's probably not reasonable to expect the the scores to know that. And so we make it, you know, much higher level. It's going to improve the condition. But then, but by the time you're looking at projects, that's probably something that, you know, that the scores should know or be able to find out. And so and so that's where it's the same theme. It's it's accomplishing a similar intent. But greater specificity as you're getting closer to those short term funding decisions.
Okay, sounds good. I think that all makes sense. And thanks, Aaron. I appreciate your your comments and agree with that approach. On the second one, it says improved natural hazard resiliency. I was curious what, how that would be defined if that is something that is already defined. Some of those that are the traffic, I probably just skimmed right over. I know exactly what they mean. So maybe some others might benefit from some definitions of of items. That was one that I just wasn't sure what it meant. And is it helpful to have some definitions? Or is that going to be clear what what all of those mean?
So, no, and that's a good point. A lot of the comments we got for goals and objectives was, hey, can you can you have a better explanation here? Or can you define this term? So for anything like that, we absolutely welcome those kind of comments. Anything where there's yeah, any question of, you know, what are they talking about? We want, we want to make that very, very clear when people are reviewing this. So so make those notes, get us that information.
Sounds good.
All right.
One of the other areas that I had questions on is goal four, support major employment in commercial areas. The second one down. And it looks like, as I think about, okay, what what will support our major employment in commercial areas? And basically, what gets points is bicycle pedestrian transit access. And I wonder, is that if we talked with these major employment commercial areas, is that their biggest need? Is that what they say, oh, yeah, you do that and will feel supported? Or kind of where did some of those thoughts come in? Are there other things that that really should account for? What are some thoughts there?
Yeah, but short answers potentially. So longer answer is I guess the previous MTPs or previous iterations, or just kind of how how the transportation network will develop by default without these specific considerations for transit and non motorized infrastructure. It will naturally favor you know, auto oriented development in in this area. And so this was a way of sort of counterbalancing that. I mean, at the same time, we're, you know, happy to explore.
Here's my thoughts, and I was actually talking with a member of the community who does some development and and kind of some of this area. And the perspective that they shared was one that these employment commercial areas where, say, somebody who's working in an area can walk across the street to get lunch, you know, has has some of that other pedestrian ability to move around, where you don't think in your car and drive everywhere, but where these areas do have this sense of connectivity. Not just so access maybe kind of gets there, but it was this feel of, you know, it's kind of a center, really. It has its its own sense of place. It has connections surrounding area. It's somewhere that you can be and be able to access access your surrounding businesses, whereas small business benefits from the the other adjacent businesses because they are all kind of serving each other. So kind of that sense of place for me, I think, would be a minor adjustment that's getting the same idea, maybe a little bit more refined. At least in my my perspective, so.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, so I mean, actually, that would, you know, that's a really fun topic to explore. So I guess my my first thought is that the MTP is sort of one piece of a comprehensive approach. And so that's where the land use plan comes in. That's where economic development plans, that's where all of these pieces sort of play together. And so for this one, I guess, trying to make it recognizing those those synergies between between the different plans and how they all need to to work together, but at the same time, understanding that the MTP can do certain things and and other plans have to do those other pieces. Did you have anything? I guess, any any thoughts or maybe an example of of where the the MTP, based on what AMAT is able to do with their funding, could address those pieces specifically? Or were you more thinking kind of a collaborative approach with, for example, Anchorage Planning?
Well, the Spinnard project is one that comes to mind that we're currently doing some collaboration on. And thinking of Spinnard more as a place versus as just a transportation route that people travel through. It's a different way of thinking. And yes, you want people to be able to access it, but you also want people to want to be there and to spend time there. And it's it's a way of thinking that I would really hope happens a lot more in in Anchorage. And so that's some of, you know, having it in the language and talked about and thought about just makes that more more top of mind and more likely to to happen in parts where something might happen, where we don't just think of our transportation network as how to get us through areas, but actually how to make that area really thrive.
Definitely. And if I can, if I can pull your attention to the next one down, where it says incorporate land use context. Where so there's one where we have kind of the basic level. It's, you know, it's addressing a known land use conflict. But then you have some of these bonuses where it's, oh, that, now it's the term, so growth supporting feature overlay. So that's your, we define that, that's your transit oriented development, your, I think, traditional neighborhood development, some of those, some of those pieces. And so that's kind of meant to get at that. Again, open to suggestions for ways to.
I notice that, I think that looks great. I think if you modify this one a little bit more focused on place and connectivity and somewhere that they want to be, I think that that, in conjunction with, I mean, a lot of this has biking paths littered throughout, which I think is great. But I think, you know, focus on that. And it looks like John Wilson has his hand up, too.
Definitely, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I appreciate Brad's points. You know, I was thinking similarly and some things, so I don't know if it's in that. I was thinking more the support major employment and commercial areas. And Ben, I appreciate your point that things are already skewed towards building more roads and road access already. But you know, some things that you'd want to be able to score would be, you know, this, I think, if Bennett is in the MTP, is to change downtown to couple it, move it to the outer perimeter, put the sixth and seventh, fifth and sixth to two way. Then, you know, any project that gets trucks from going downtown, that would help. Certainly, this employment and commercial area downtown. And even, I know I think we should be able to use these funds for paving alleys, but that's important, too, because that gets us more homes. You know, instead of doing a duplex, you can do a fourplex on that lot. So so things like that are, and they're in the land use plan discussed, but getting those in the scoring system, it's it looks like it's missed here, but I haven't, we're going through this now, so thank you. And I have to leave briefly, unfortunately. So I'm going to stay in the meeting and hopefully come back quick.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you for your thoughts. Yeah, I mean, because this is the thing, the the team is, we are really interested in seeing how how this affects housing and is affected by housing, how it affects the environment and is affected by the environment and, you know, and so on and so forth. And so so part of this is, you know, we're taking kind of our best stab at trying to accomplish all of these things while, you know, make, you know, while paying attention to the limitations of what AMAT can do. But ultimately, we see this as a collaborative approach and and we're, you know, we're paying attention to public comment. We're paying attention to, you know, to stakeholders with maybe industry specific knowledge. And it's something that we really want to meaningfully address.
One of the other items, Ben, that I had is the EJ populations one, the very last goal six.
Yeah.
And the nuances between mobility and accessibility. And, you know, the thought that I've been having is mobility often is about level service and delay and some of those is often what is immediately thought about. Whereas accessibility is could be thought a little more about nearby destinations, able to get access. And sometimes that's mobility, too. It's a little bit tough sometimes with those nuances of what those words are meaning. But in thinking kind of the purpose of our transportation system of being able to get access to destinations and other locations that we want to go, wondering how if if this metric can be looking at at something along that line? Or if those are the thoughts of what this was actually trying to accomplish?
Yeah, so I mean, so it's it's both. And so part of that, if you go back to the the performance measures, not here on the screen, but but just just thinking about. So we talked partially about the, you know, the connectivity piece, or sorry, the the access, which is you know, creating like sidewalks or bike lanes or whatever, so that you can get to the bus stop or that sort of piece. But also looking at, you know, service per hour, how, you know, how late are they staying open? What are the headways? How does it compete with other modes, making it a competitive alternative? And so that is something that, yeah, so something to definitely chew on for us on on our side. I guess what we might gain by splitting out those two and and sort of defining.
It's not so much access as it is accessibility. I know that there's some nuance with some of those words, right? Access would be, you got a sidewalk that you can get to, right? Or you have a transit stop. Mobility is being able to travel. And accessibility is you have destinations close by that you can get to readily. And that does have a land use component in there. And so even if they can't, they don't like, if they've got all these destinations really close, like, say, Spinnard, right? That they could have a sidewalk that gets from Chugatch Way area onto Spinnard, and you've got nice facilities, boom, you've got great accessibility to everything there along Spinnard. No, it's not a long trip. Which, when you think mobility, sometimes you think you can go lots of places, right? But you've got this accessibility, and it's kind of a combination of the access. I know it's nuanced with words, but.
No, so, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go, I'm done.
So, so I guess like what what comes to mind when you're talking, I'm thinking of like the 15 minute community, right? Can you access all of your basic needs within 15 minutes, you know, walking or or with some like easy mobility option? Or transit, that kind of thing. So it's it's accessible because, yeah, because it's not just, you know, you can get anywhere in town, but it's like, yeah, it's it's there within sort of your your local community area within.
Yeah, I think for me, if that's what you're looking at for the EJ, that makes a lot more sense and I think is helpful. I'm not sure if from the mobility, when I think of the level of service and some of the traffic.
Yeah.
Not quite, not quite complete. Access isn't quite there either. So I like that, really, that that 15 minute kind of idea.
Yeah, so I mean, so the the, I guess, like, the the deeper line of questioning, Ben, is is, well, what can what can the MTP accomplish there and what can't it accomplish? Where where do we rely on something like a land use plan or or something similar? Or like you mentioned, the Spinnard, the Spinnard corridor plan, where that is a specific a plan, sorry, a specific plan where you have the planning and the transportation folks who are collaborating, collaborating on a specific project to address those in tandem. As opposed to the MTP where you have one set of staff in the land use plan where you have another set of staff. And yes, there's some collaboration, but but yeah, finding ways to 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 merge that.
I think if you can get there as close. I think if you can get there as close as you can with your tools, that, that makes sense. But this is the thought of what we're on thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, yeah, we'll, we'll wrestle with that and see what, and see how close we can get to accomplishing all, all three of those sort of nuanced pieces.
And my one last question is on the very last page where it talks about, it has a performance evaluation measures by alternative based on the AMATS travel model. Kind of my questions on the other table of, you know, how are we measuring things, right? And I recognize with the future model, you don't have future data, so you have to rely on models that you have that you can use. As I think about a performance system, I think it's got multiple elements. It's got the targets, it's got the, the models for making estimates. It has monitoring systems that track what actually is happening. You know, are things making progress? Can we think from MTP to MTP of each time an MTP comes along? Can it look at where we are compared to where we were in the prior MTP? So that we're looking at some, some actual data and it's not pie in the sky kind of, you know, what does the model tell us might happen? But we can actually see that we're making progress on things. How, how would you speak to kind of an overall performance system that includes a monitoring element?
Yes. Okay. So this, this is where I wish, RSG, which is our, the, the subs on, on this project who, who are involved in the, in the modeling process. I think they'd be a lot more eloquent than, than I'll be here, but. So, yeah, so that's, that's, that'd be a good thing for us to, to look at and consider. Because that, that is the challenge, measuring that sort of incremental progress between those, you know, five-year updates. I don't have a good answer for you right now, but I'd love to touch base with, with them, just to get your really good answer for that.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks.
Absolutely.
I just want to say I appreciate all your work. Thanks for taking all my questions. This is an area, as you can tell, I think about quite a bit and in the weeds and doing lots of data and modeling and managing metrics. So, so thanks so much.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, then I'll turn it over to someone else. Thank you all for listening and your patience and hearing me ramble, so.
Hey, thanks, Ben. John had a quick comment in the chat about checking the math in the scoring. So, John, yes, thank you. We will, we will make sure.
You're right. I, I multiplied by seven. It should have been multiplied by six. For six goals. We, we originally had seven, so one was cut.
All right. Well, we, we are making good time. Aaron, do you have anything else to add? Maybe a reminder of next steps and what we need to do for next month?
Yeah. So thank you all. That was awesome. So next steps now are kind of finalizing these documents based on the comments we heard today and bringing them forward for the committees to release for a 30-day public comment period in February. So we will, we, we'll have to get them on the agenda next week to post. So that's what we're going to be working on pretty quickly. So then that 30-day public comment period will happen in March. And then after that comment period closes, we'll be working on responding to the public comments and moving on to next steps. So unless anyone has any other questions or comments, I think we'll be done for today. Okay. Thank you all very much for attending. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Thanks all. Take care.